To the flag are the United States of America, an imperial republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Jonathan Ramsey.
Here.
Marion Rosa.
Here.
Kent Demir.
Here.
Robert Dusina.
Here.
Anthony Debona.
Here.
Gary Lafferty.
Here.
Robert Ritalik.
Here.
Denise Russ.
Here.
Rachel Ryan.
Here.
Thank you very much. Next on the agenda is considered budgets for fiscal year 2022 and 2023. I just want to do a quick recap of how we got to where we are today. The initial budget that was proposed by the department heads, and that includes the Board of Ed as well, was a total of eighty-five million, three hundred and ninety thousand and sixty-three dollars. We then had a town manager recommended budget, inclusive of the Board of Ed, of eighty-four million, six hundred and fifty-three thousand, one hundred and ninety dollars. What the town council voted to go to referendum this past month came to a total of eighty-four thousand, one hundred and thirty-three dollars and, sorry, one hundred and thirty-three thousand, two hundred and ninety-nine dollars, which would have been an increase in the mill rate of roughly point five seven. As most of you guys are aware, at referendum, the Board of, sorry, the town side passed, the Board of Ed's side failed by roughly, or not roughly, but by four votes. There was a little over seventeen hundred people that came and voted, which is on the lower side, unfortunately, but that is what came out to vote. So, is there any discussions and/or motions that anyone would like to make? Gary?
I was just wondering, was there a recount with the, with the votes so close?
There, my notice there was a manual recount, and it came back with the exact same number as the machines, yes.
Okay.
Any discussion? Any motions?
For discussion's sake.
Okay, for discussion's sake, this budget failed, but what are we recommending to cut it? How are we going to cut this if we have to really cut?
What do you mean?
Well, the budget failed, the referendum failed, so that means you have to make some cuts.
Correct.
Okay, where are the cuts coming from?
Well, that's what we're here to discuss and re-vote.
We don't get to decide that.
Okay.
I'll make a motion.
Okay.
Given the extremely unusual circumstance of the vote passing by, or, I'm sorry, the school board failing by four votes with a twelve percent voter turnout and seventeen hundred voters turning out on that day, I think that we should, that I make a motion to send the same budget to referendum and give the voters another chance at this, the same numbers we proposed.
And is there a second?
I'll second it.
Any further discussion? All in favor, oh, sorry.
Through the chair. It was frequently mentioned during previous budget meetings, discussions, presentations, and so forth by other council members, let's go to referendum and let the voters decide. And it appears to me that two weeks ago, the voters decided that they, yes, they passed the town side budget, and we frequently heard, of course, how beer-bones the Board of Education budget was. Well, I could tell you that in reviewing the budget and speaking to the department heads, the town side budget was presented also beer-boned. If cuts are to be made, I don't think it should be come from the town side budget. Thank you.
Through the chair, what is a normal turnout if that was twelve percent? What, how many, like, what was the last referendum before that? Does anybody know?
Twenty-three hundreds, we're in that, I'm guessing, but that's...
It was a little more than thirteen and a half percent, so it was in the twenty-three hundred.
So it's always a low turnout, so that's irrelevant that it only failed by three votes, four votes, whatever.
Any further discussion, yes?
Unfortunately, it has always been the practice and understood that if a budget fails, it's cut. It's not something that we're happy about, but it is an indication to the public that their opinion counts. So whether we like it or not, I believe we have to cut the budget.
Any further discussion? And when we vote, if you guys could just raise your hand for the records, make sure everyone knows who voted for or against. Any, anything else?
Wait, I'm sorry, did you call for a vote?
Nope, not yet. Any further discussion, comments? Okay. All in favor of the current motion, which is to leave the budget as is, please say aye.
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 All opposed? Say aye.
Aye.
Abstentions? Motion fails. Is there any additional discussion or motions?
I'll make a motion. If people feel strongly that the budget needs to be cut, and again, I'm going to go with the, the numbers here, and given how small the vote was, I happen to know five people who would have voted for the budget on that day had there not been unusual circumstances that had happened to them during that day, this, this, this budget very easily could have passed. Sorry, I'm making a motion. So I propose that we would only cut a hundred thousand dollars from the school budget, keep the town budget as it is, given that that passed, and as Herm mentioned, the school board budget is, is already bare bones, and the children of our town are the ones who will be hurt if we make anything larger than that to our school board budget. I think we use the term "school board budget" without thinking about the fact that we're talking about children. We're talking about preschoolers who are two and three years old. My children went to the preschool in Watertown, it was absolutely wonderful. Those teachers were amazing, all the way up to seniors in high school, and now, as you know, we've got some other programs to help out our students in town, find jobs. So this is about our children and their futures, and last week, we had a presentation where we are considering a new motto, that Watertown is a place to call home. If we cannot support our children and their education, we cannot call Watertown a place to call home. So I cannot support anything more than a very slight cut to the school board budget.
Is there a second on that motion?
Second.
Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, we'll go for a vote. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Aye.
Aye.
No, no, that's opposed.
Oh, no, no, she didn't seem to...
Did you get that, Sue? I believe it was three and six. No one abstained? Correct. Motion fails. Anyone else? Any further discussion or motions?
Jonathan.
Nope. Yes?
I have, I have a question. So far, two motions have been made, two motions have failed. So someone needs to come up with another motion, and I don't know if the town manager has any thoughts on what kind of cuts, or anybody have any more thoughts of how much you want to cut from each budget? I mean, we're just making motions, and no one's showing us any figures except for Rachel, so we have to come up with some concrete numbers.
Could we hear from the school board, their representatives sitting in the audience?
I'd rather not at this time. Anyone? I'll make a motion, no one else is. I make a motion to cut the town budget by two hundred thousand dollars and the school budget by five hundred thousand dollars. Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion?
There's been support to make a million point two cut overall, which I believe would be a devastating cut if you're looking at education and town services. Obviously, I couldn't support that. I think this is probably one of the hardest votes I have ever had to cast, but I'm trying to find a happy medium between no cut and a million two. So I will support it.
Any further discussion, I see. Yeah, Gary?
I'm not sure if it's the right time or not, but I think throughout this whole budget thing in the past couple of years, through the whole pandemic, the fire department's gone through a lot, I think, and they've never gotten any recognition or anything. They don't, they've, they've responded to all the calls in town, they never got any special treatment like the Board of Ed or the Highway Department, and I think that they, their budget should stay as is.
We don't.
Any other comments or discussion?
Through the chair if I can. I, I've heard the discussion tonight, and, and I too had a child that went through the Watertown school system, and I'm very proud of our school system, and I support our teachers immensely. But I also have to support people in this town that we're forgetting about, the elderly who can't afford this right now, who the oil companies are coming and continuing to ask if you only want half of your oil tank filled up, which mine did, for a hundred gallons cost me over five hundred and something dollars. And we sit there and say that, oh, our taxes will only increase by ten dollars a month, and that's so untrue, when you can't find somebody to mow your lawn anymore for less than fifty dollars, or you can't go to the gas station and fill your car up for less than a hundred dollars. It's, it's getting to the point where people are struggling, and yes, and what do we do as, as townspeople? We have to do what's right for everyone, and it's not just the children. I think that's a talking point, and I think that's a, a weak way out to just make people feel guilty about children. I want to support the children. I want the best school system we could possibly provide. This isn't the year for it, and, and it's a tough decision to make, and, you know, and I truly wanted one point two million dollar cut, and I was sticking to my guns up until I got here tonight, and I will support the, the two and the five. And I, I don't want to see an increase to the townspeople, but it, it's something that I have to do.
Rachel?
I wanted to hear from the Board of Ed because my suspicion is that five hundred thousand dollars will mean that people lose their jobs, and if people lose their jobs, they will not be able to afford to fill up their car, fill up their oil tank, pay somebody to mow their lawn. They'll have to find a new job, and a new job out of Watertown, which means they might have to leave Watertown, which will impact our taxes. I don't understand how, if the average tax is going to go up by a hundred and forty dollars a year, that you can justify that when people will lose their jobs. Mark said it at the last meeting, that, that people who work for the town would lose their jobs, and last year, we heard from the paraprofessionals, and they were going to lose their jobs. They talked about having to get rid of a security officer. We just saw what happened in Buffalo, where a police officer who tried to stop that shooter was shot and killed. We need those security officers in our schools. If teachers lose their jobs, there will be larger class sizes that will not provide our students a quality education. Cutting this budget is illogical, it is harmful, and will harm this town this year and into the future, and for what? I don't understand. We're not talking about a lot of money.
Anyone else?
Rachel made me think, because I'm, I'm somebody that lost my job, so I'm going to tell you a short story. Twenty-one years ago, we were asked, five managers, to reduce our staff by about sixty-five percent. So we argued with the people in North Chicago in our corporate office, and they argued with us, and they came back and they got rid of the managers. We should try that.
Anyone else? Denise, turn your mic on.
Why can we try cutting the school board less than five hundred thousand dollars? Can we do the hundred thousand cut and keep two hundred thousand for the town?
The, the current motion on the table is a cut from the town of two hundred thousand and the school of five hundred.
Five hundred from the school. Can, yeah. I mean, if this vote fails, can we just consider lowering the school board more if we have to go to another vote?
Any further discussion? Yeah, I'll just mention very briefly that, obviously, if you look at the record, I'm, I've, I've been in favor, you know, there's a split in the party, our Republican Party, as to where, where we go. I, I was in favor, given the ARPA funds that have come in for a, a no-mill increase, I thought that we could make it happen. I still think we could, without significant cuts. That could be funds that we take out of our general fund and using those ARPA funds, so I, I'm still, you know, in favor of a no, no-mill increase. I will say that as a compromise, you know, I, I, I would support this motion on the table, and I'd vote for it, somewhat reluctantly, but, you know, I think that it's, it's, it's a reasonable compromise. I still think that we could have found a different way to make this happen for our people, but I, 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 I will, I will, I will be in favor of, of this motion, I'll vote for it. Any further discussion? Rachel?
We got in our email a packet that said that if we used the ARPA funds, that that would lower our bond rating. Sue, that's correct, right? Or potentially could harm our bond rating?
I believe it was using the general fund.
It would, if we use the fund balance, not the ARPA funds, money that's in our current fund balance. Okay, yeah. Thank you for that clarification.
I'd just like to clarify that. In the discussion that we had with our bonds person, it was actually ARPA funds and our general fund, because our budget would not be structurally balanced. So if we took revenue from a source that is not going to be produced next year, as the memo stated, it could affect our bond rating. So it is both ARPA and the balance of the budget, the bond, general fund. Thank you.
Any further discussion? I just wanted to add that with these cuts, the total of seven hundred thousand, along with roughly five hundred thousand of ARPA funds that we've already kind of reallocated, the motion that's on the table now would result in a mill rate increase of roughly point two, which is somewhere in the ballpark of point five eight percent, and a mill rate of, these are my numbers, not Sue's, so they might be off by point zero one, but in any case, right around the thirty-four point seven six mill rate. So before a vote, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye. Through the chair, is there any way that we could avoid cutting from the town side?
Yes, can amend the motion, that there would be no cut to the town side, and the only cut would be the five hundred thousand, it's the only way you can do it.
Through the chair. Microphone? Excuse me. Through the chair, I'd like to make an amended motion, that any cuts should not be from the town side. They should come from the Board of Ed budget, the budgets presented individually by the town side department heads, I don't want to use the term beer-boned again, that we're always talking about, unfortunately, the children. I had three children myself, who all went to schools in town, all succeeded in life, through the schools, very happy with the schools, that always that is thrown at us, the council. What about the children? I'm concerned about the children, but a valid point was brought up by my council counterpart right here, Mr. Demir's. The Board of Ed does appear to be top-heavy, not to me, but, not only to me, rather, but to other people in town. Co-administrators, vice principals, I believe there's fourteen people in the chain of command above the superintendent, and we did request at an earlier budget presentation to have these job descriptions. I didn't get any, did we get any? Your job descriptions? No. So I'm not advocating to cut teachers, to hurt students with classroom sizes. That always comes up every year. I'm advocating, if any cuts are to be made, also for, it's, there's a misconception. You have school security officers, those are former police officers, one from Watertown, one from Noragutuck, one from Wogan. Those are security officers. The school resource officers aren't just there to protect the students, for example, at the high school, at Swift Middle School, they're there to intervene, to reach out to the students if they have problems, to work in conjunction with the administrators, with the guidance counselors. So let's not confuse school resource officers, what they do, they're there for the benefit of the students, the staff, and to intervene and prevent problems that occur in other parts of the country, to red-flag somebody that is there as a problem. So I'm just going to say it should be amended the motion, I may make that amendment.
I don't believe you can amend my motion.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
So either you could vote, vote for or against the current motion, and then we go from there?
Yes, sir.
I don't believe you can amend my motion.
Why?
Thank you.
I'm not amending my motion.
Through, through the chair, I want to add to my story, not to bore everybody, but I was in that job for nineteen years and eight months, four months away from a pension. I had a baby that was a year and a half old, I just bought a house. I survived.
So it's clear that some members of the town council have shown their true cards, and that they're opposed to administrators within our school system because they're being paid too much, allegedly. We had a number of meetings with the school board and with the superintendent, and none of you asked any questions about those salaries and union contracts, and during the entire budget process, you never asked, how could you reduce administrative salaries and administrative overload in order to benefit the students? That never once came up, and now, all of a sudden, you want to cut five hundred thousand dollars because you don't like what these professionals are getting paid, what they deserve to get paid? From somebody who is in education, they deserve to get paid for the work they do in our public schools, and what you are going to accomplish, what you want to accomplish is not going to happen, and what will happen is that kindergarten teachers will lose their jobs, paraprofessionals will lose their jobs, maybe school resource officers will lose their jobs. You can't fire a principal or a vice principal. Somebody has to run those schools.
Through the chair, I, I don't recall anybody talking about anybody's paycheck tonight, unless I missed it. Could you, that person speak up?
And just for the record, I'm sure you guys are all aware that we have, we as the town council have no say on how the Board of Ed does their cuts. That is in the board's hands.
Through the chair if I can. I guess I'm, I'm, I understand where Mr. Ryan is coming from, but on the other side, you are a teacher, and I, I understand that you need to stick up for your fellow teachers, but if this was your business, Ms. Ryan, and your business was overspending and couldn't afford to operate the way that you're operating, you too would have to make that tough decision to possibly lay people off. Nobody here wants to lay anybody off.
Through the chair, I'm going to ask that you stop, no.
Wait, wait.
Point of order. This is, point of order is right. You are out of line. You do not bring anything about anybody to a town council meeting.
Excuse me. I'm talking.
I'm sorry, I'm just...
Order, guys. Turn your mic back on. Yep, turn your bike, mic back on. Thank you.
So, you know, and I understand the passion in this room, I totally do, but you have to understand there's, there's more out there than that, and I don't want to see a teacher lose their job. I don't want to see that, and I don't like the politics that is being played here and making us feel like that we're going to make people lose their jobs. Maybe it's time for somebody to go look in that budget and pull some things that you're paying for that don't make sense anymore, or to move things around that don't make sense anymore, and that's our point, is our point is, we need to reinvent the way that we do things to make this town more, more affordable and to have a school system that we're obviously very proud of.
Thank you. I just want to add briefly that we're here because this budget didn't pass. I, I know it didn't, it didn't pass by just a few, a few votes, I recognize that, but we're here because of that reason. Denise, did you have? Microphone?
Unfortunately, you have the votes to make or break the budget, and I voting no, because number one, five hundred thousand dollars is a lot, and the town doesn't have to give up a penny. That is not right. Number two, I remember years ago when we laid off about fifteen to twenty teachers, and it took us years to get us back again. So nothing is going to go down to twenty dollars an hour, gas is never going to go down to three dollars and something, or two dollars. So we face the fact, this is the price, and I believe the town should take a hit also. Thank you.
The current motion on the table does include a cut to the town. Any further discussion? Ken, do you have some?
Make, make no mistake, I'm going to support the motion. I just needed to be clear on how I felt.
Seeing no other comments, just as a reminder, the motion on the table is to cut the town budget by two hundred thousand dollars and the Board of Ed budget by five hundred thousand dollars. Through the chair, just to clarify, that's, that is a, a cut or a reduction from what was presented at the last Correct. budget vote, is that right? It's a reduction of what went out for referendum. Thank you. Anything further? Once again, if we could raise our hands on the vote. All in favor of the current motion, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
No.
Abstentions? Motion passes. So we'll continue on with the rest of the administrative side of these votes.
I move the following budgets to be approved, to be sent to referendum utilizing the following changes. Town general fund, thirty-three million, three hundred and eighty-three thousand, eight hundred and sixty-one. School general fund, fifty million, forty-nine thousand, four hundred and thirty-eight. General fund total, eighty-three million, four hundred and thirty-three thousand, two hundred and ninety-nine. Sewer extension, seventy thousand. Water operations, one million, nine hundred and ninety-five thousand, seventy-eight. Water capital, two hundred and sixty-nine thousand. Sewer operations, one million, nine hundred and seventy-nine thousand, three hundred and twenty. Sewer capital, a hundred and sixty-nine thousand. Water and sewer debt, three hundred thousand, seven hundred and fifty. Crestbrook Gulf... Cressbrook Gulf operations, $723,068. Town road aid, $348,918. Local capital improvement, $151,260. Debt service fund, $292,585.
Just for clarification, can you just reread D, the water operations number? No. 1979. I have a different number. That is the correct number? Okay. I have a slightly different number on one of my printouts.
Slightly different number as well.
No, the, actually, D, water operations.
They change.
It should be updated on the
On the motion sheet?
On the motion sheet is an update.
Today's motion sheet versus... So is there a second on that motion?
I'll second that, but just through the chair, I'd want, just to clarify, everything that Ms. Rosa read is the same as what was brought to the vote? Is that correct? Except for the town general fund being reduced by $200,000 and the school general fund being reduced by $500,000? Is that correct? Thank you.
Any further discussion on this? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Abstentions?
Abstained.
Motion passes.
I move to approve the referendum notice for the machine vote on the 2022-2023 budget as follows. A referendum of electors and citizens qualified to vote in town meeting of the town of Watertown will be held on Tuesday, June 21, 2022, between the hours of 6:00 a.m. and 8:00 p.m., to vote for the approval or disapproval of the fiscal year budget 2022-2023. Voting will be at the following polling places. Voting District 6801 is Watertown High School, 324 French Street. Voting District 6802, Jutson School, 124 Hamilton Lane. Voting District 6803, Swift Middle School, 250 Colonial Street. And voting District 6804 is Polk School, 437 Buckingham Street. Persons qualified to vote in town meeting who are not electors shall vote at the office of the registrar, 61 Echo Lake Road, which is formerly Hemingway Park School. Absentee ballots may be obtained at the town clerk's office.
Is there a second?
A second.
Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Abstentions? Motion passes.
I move that the budget question be placed on the voting machine as follows. Question one, shall the fiscal year 2022-2023 town general budget be approved in the amount of $33,383,861? And shall the following fiscal year 2022-2023 budgets be approved in the amounts of sewer extension, $70,000? Water operations, $1,995,078? Water capital, $269,000? Sewer operations, $1,979,320? Sewer capital, $169,000? Water and sewer debt, $300,750? Cressbrook Gulf operations, $723,068? Town road aid, $348,918? Local capital improvements, $151,260? And debt service fund, $292,585? Second question, shall the fiscal year 2022-2023 school general fund budget be approved in the amount of $50,49,438? Voters approving each question will vote yes, and those opposing each question will vote no.
Is there a second?
A second.
Any discussion?
Just for clarification again, just to belabor it, these questions reflect the numbers we just discussed in the prior motion with the reductions, because I don't have the total amounts in front of me.
Yes.
Okay, they do. Thank you.
And just for further clarification, the items A through J, sewer extension, so on and so forth, for the most part, the revenues for those funds are self-sustaining. They come from water bills, sewer bills, so on and so forth, so it's not part of the taxes collected for the rest of the budget. Any further discussion?
No, sir.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Abstentions? Motion passes. Number seven on the agenda.
Move your turn.
Second. Have a good night.
Recording stopped.